Workshop for June 13th, 2017 is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I will turn the workshop over to our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Penny Zirker.
Good afternoon. I think we've hit afternoon now. Today, we're going to talk about where we are with the budget process. Unfortunately, we, or could be fortunate, depending on your viewpoint, we are not nearly as far along as we would normally be by this time, and we would be presenting to you a full-fledged budget. Our timeline, as you can see, we're at the budget workshop. We're more than halfway through our work, however, we've reached the busy season when we get our budget from legislature. So what has happened so far? What do we know? We received a conference report from the first legislative session on June 2nd. It was vetoed by the governor. A special session was set for June 7th through the 9th, and on June 2nd, the day it was vetoed, there was a joint press conference held to announce the deal, which was for $400 million line item vetoes, $200 million added to the K-12 budget, which they felt would equate to about $100 per student, state tourism increase of $76 million, job creation of $85, and Governor Scott agreed to look further at House Bill 7069. Although it was vetoed, our conference report was going to provide us $2.165 million in additional fund. That was a .41 percent increase as compared to the statewide 1.2. Remember, some of our changes, why is ours different? We don't get DCD, we don't get sparsity supplements, so we end up with a less percentage. The base student allocation actually decreased from the conference report, and the required local millage, we received a rollback rate again this year as we did last year, costing the district $14 million. The discretionary millage did remain at the same millage, and because of the property value increase for our district, it would have gone up. But all of that was vetoed by the governor, so it doesn't matter. Special session completed on Friday. From what we know from reading the reports through Florida School Board Association, FADS, and the paper, $250 million increase to the Florida Education Finance Program, which is supposed to equate to $100 per student. The Senate agreed to the House version, so the Senate had their version, the House had a different one. Senate agreed to use the House version with some minor tweaks for updated revenue estimates. We still have not received the first calculation. It's my understanding that the governor is expected to sign and review legislation, including this, sometime this week, so I would expect we'll actually get the first calculation shortly after that. That being said, we do have something to go on, and that is the House Bill 3A, which was also published by the Senate as a revised one for them on June 8th. For statewide impacts for House Bill 3A, we're making the assumption this is what the first calculation will look like. The base FEFP does go up $216 million. That equates, though, only to a $70.31 increase per student. So it is totaled over the total dollar amount they said they were giving, but doesn't quite reach the $100. Virtual education was reduced by $3 million, and federally connected went up by $78,000 across the state. And it makes the total increase $213,603,385 for the state. For Brevard Public Schools, the impact, they did produce an FEFP report with that House Bill 3A, so we're using that data. It provides to the base FEFP a $5,577,494 increase over what we had seen in the conference report. That provides a $70.31 increase. Virtual education is reduced by $42,000 compared to the conference report. Federally connected student supplement for us went up $7,605, and our total increase over the conference was $5,0542. Total increase over '16-'17, so we can compare the special session to last, the current year's budget, it's a $7,821,28 increase. Now, as you're aware, when we talked back in February at our first budget workshop, we talked about all the things we're doing over the spring to scrub budgets and identify funds. We had winter break closure, where we shut down the whole district for two weeks, and that saved the district $70,000 that we can add back into our available savings. Department operating budget scrub, you remember, we talked about the new process, where we were going to look at four years of actual history expenditures in our departments and work with the departments to determine what they really needed based on actual expenditures. That scrub netted the district $834,000 that was being budgeted that we do not need to have in the budgets. We also went over district-level positions within our departments, although some of these may have worked with schools, they were not school assigned. Any position that had been vacant since July 1, 2017, went through all of those. We removed some, such as capital positions, facilities positions funded by capital. We retained some reserves that we feel we need to keep for the schools. But we identified just over $2 million of vacant positions that were vacant all year to remove from the budget. Also, a few months earlier than we've done in the past, we took a look at our lapsed salaries for retirees. We've been working with the retirement department, identified those individuals that have already put in for retirement, and taken those positions down to an average higher-end entry-level rate, and that puts $1 million, which is about what we put back into the budget last year at the same time into it. So so far, we've been able to identify a little over $4 million out of our budget scrubs that we could put back in. The last thing that staff is working on is additional departmental budget reviews, and we've asked staff to go back and look at their budgets and identify 3%, 5%, and 10% cuts. Now, within that, one thing we did do, because of the department operating scrub, if they already gave up, in some cases, 20% and 30% of their budget, we did not ask them to give back up. But if they had not met one of those thresholds, we asked them to provide us that information. Where we're at now is looking at the impacts that those cuts would have on our district. They've been labeled as minor, major, and critical, so Dr. Blackburn and I and staff will be reviewing those and trying to determine what is really available that we can bring back into the district. As always, we have some mandated usage that we have absolutely no choice in doing. The first is committed categoricals of the increases over '16-'17, just under $100,000 we have to use in certain ways, so we removed that from our calculation. We know that the FRS contribution is going up. We have not seen the final rates or reports from Florida Retirement System, but we have looked at the bills. Based on the rates in the bills, we believe it'll go up about $1.3 million that we will have to pay in addition for retirement. Our charter school growth and FTE estimate is just under $5 million. If legacy charter does not open this year, and at this point, I don't think we have 100% confirmation that they will go do that, there's about 1.6 that will come back into the district because those students will not leave our district, but the remainder will continue. We're still looking at our staff increase that we have to do for our own students. We do not have a huge growth within district-level students. I think overall, the district, traditional and charter, grew about 600 students. Traditional schools, about 4 students. So we still have to look at that mix between basic, ESE, ESOL, and so forth, determine if we're going to need to bring in, if that mix changed over last year, do we need any additional staffing, and we're still trying to analyze that for a decision there. So at this point, we have $6.3 million of mandated usage that we have to use the funds for. So if we bring all three of these things together, our special session funding, $7.8 million, recurring budgetary savings, $4.1, subtract our mandated usage of $6.4, we come out with available recurring after mandates of $5,572,154.
May I interrupt and ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Zirker. So this is where we stand right this moment, but '70-'69 has the potential to have significant impact on the numbers that we're looking at at this very moment. Am I correct in that assumption?
Correct, and that was the next thing I was going to discuss, is the thing still to be determined. And House Bill 7069 is high on that list. The impacts that will come out of Title I funding changes, the distribution of that could greatly impact what we need to do. They maintain the 75% threshold, so all schools who have reached that threshold get their share first. The rest of the funds, except for a small portion, are distributed directly to the schools. There's an 8% holdback that the district gets. That includes our indirect cost. Indirect cost is something from the federal government, the state calculates for us, that we're allowed to withhold to handle all of the administrative functions that the district does for those federal workers. That 8% includes that plus anything else that we want to do. And I'm going to look back to Ms. Klein, I think it was 1% for, I've got a blank, I didn't write it down, there's another 1% for parent involvement that we can use it for. We do need to get a better understanding of the language in this. The language of the bill does allow schools to purchase district services with the money. That will be something, once we get some language from the Department of Education, we'll need to work with Ms. Invall to make sure what does that mean to us? Does that mean schools can purchase the services we've already been providing them, such as literacy coaches and some of the special programs, and we can continue that? Or will we need to turn around and look at doing something different and have to eliminate some programs? So that's a huge unknown at this point. The other is recess requirement impact, and again, everything we're talking about today is more operating fund, not capital. What is that going to cost us? Are we going to need to do something with a day which they could impact salaries? So that's still another question. '70-'69, from a capital standpoint, we have the sharing with charter schools. That formula does allow us to deduct our debt payment prior to having the share, which is a good thing for us. In my estimate of that, based on reading the formula, is somewhere between $1.4 and $1.8 million that we would have to share out. Again, it's dependent on our FTE going in, so it's our capital outlay FTE plus charter schools FTE, and then divided by factor. So it's still up in the air as well. The other thing we have to look at, we're still working on those budget priorities, which the board has looked at in the past, and we're going to talk about how those have fallen out in just a moment, and we're waiting on here in closing. We are in the month of June, about halfway through, we will begin actually closing the books early July, and I anticipate early August we'll be closed, but we probably have a good idea for that fund balance, and our dollars are going to fall out late July. Ms. Clark? Make sure, she's the one doing the work, so make sure I'm not committing her to something I should be. So our budget priorities, they've been categorized as critical priorities, very high priorities, high priorities, and then non-recurring priorities. And within the categories, we have ranked them by, from lowest to highest cost. So we'll start with our critical priorities, the ones that fell into the critical category after the board retreat. Suicide prevention program at $16,000 for the operating fund.
Penny, can I ask, is it just the board? Are we the only ones that ranked them, or is this all of staff and board that did the ranking?
Well, the staff initially ranked them.
Right.
We took the board's rankings to create this category.
So when we did the critical, very high, that's just from us? This is our?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Southlake Choice School at $1.3 million, excuse me, $170,838 for the operating fund, and then salary increases, which 1% cost $4.2 million. So the critical priorities totaled $4.4 million for the operating fund. Very high priorities, the applicant tracking software at $43,000, Avid implementation at $53,000, choice regional busing proposal, that's $55,000 for the operating fund, almost $6 million for the capital. Restructuring of the alternative learning centers at $105,000, athletic assistance at $200,000, centralized internal accounts at $201,000, school security officers, $250,000, tier-one social emotional supports at $675,000, the 16 early literacy instructional coaches, and the director of Brevard After School and principal supervision, $917,000, and social emotional support, 18 social workers, at $1.1 million. General fund operating costs are $3,625,683 for this group. The high priorities, three fell into that, was the issue track software at $35,000, expanding the gifted program at $74,537, and the campus monitors at $84,705, for a total cost of Non-recurring, these are items that would be only expenditure this year and not carry into other years. Preparing new principal program for $30,000, the HumanX Venture Screener and Training Program for $30,000, initial discipline plan training for $35,000, and the automation of personnel piles, $180,000. Non-recurring is $275,000. The funding for that would come out of dollars that fall to bottom line for the 2016-'17 school. So our next steps, we're waiting for the governor to sign the K-12 appropriation so that the Florida Department of Education will issue the first calculation, and we can define for certain what our new dollars from DOE and the legislature are. We'll then finalize the tentative budget. Based on our priorities is where we'll begin looking at what goes first based on the money that's available in conversation with the board. We'll come back on July 11th at our regular board meeting. We're going to ask permission of the board to approve the ad that will go into the paper on July 22nd. We will give you what we think the budget will be in a high summary level for that, but we will still be finalizing and working on it. We'll get another calculation from DOE, what we call the second calculation of the funding in around July 17, and then we'll finalize our budget. The TRIM advertisement will go in on July 22nd, and the first public hearing to adopt the tentative budget millage will be Thursday, July 27th at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. We'll gain board feedback and adjustments along the way, and then we'll have our second final public hearing to adopt the final budget millage here at the boardroom. And I lost it there, but it's September, Thursday, September 7th. It went back to the top.
5:30.
I've got it here. Thursday, September 7th at 5:30 here in the boardroom. And that is what I have to present today, not normally as big and detailed as I normally would, but it's what we have to base on. What questions can I answer for the board?
I have two concerns, since it looks like our revenue is not going to be where we would like it to implement some of our priorities. So the two things that I want to focus on that cannot wait until last-minute decisions, one is the Southlake Choice School. I believe we've got some things in the works already moving in that direction. Is that correct, Dr. Blackburn? So I just wanted to point that out, that that is a very high priority, and that one way or the other, we've pretty much committed to go down that road. The other one, which, based on dollar amount, will probably never get picked up, but I don't believe is an acceptable decision by the board, is the regional busing. I bring that up because there are other options to make this happen, and I understand staff's logic in saying that we prefer not to charge parents for the transportation, and we prefer not to lease buses. But I just wanted to say that if our option is the recommendation or not doing the busing, I'm not good with that. Therefore, I think it's prudent to start formulating some plans to make sure that it's going to happen when we don't get the revenue we need to buy 55 buses. Dr. Blackburn?
Yes, sir. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Zirker, for our current regional busing proposal, the operating dollar is required, $55,000. The capital, large number, is the $5.7 million, and in our capital plan, we have that...
We, in our capital plan, it calls for $4 million.
$4 million, okay.
And we could certainly fund...
If we had to, so.
Well, let's clarify that. My understanding is that $4 million that's in capital for busing is for traditional busing, and that this expense is above and beyond our traditional busing. However, with creative acquisition, we could accommodate both, and that's on the capital side. So whether, if we were to spend that $4 million on the buses for choice, then we would be aging our fleet for traditional busing, and I don't believe that was an acceptable solution. I think we need a solution to both, and I find hard to believe that 50, that $55,000 is going to be enough additional labor for a year's worth of, or is that less the subsidy from the state for busing?
That's less the increase of the funding from the state. So if we increase our ridership, then we would be gaining funding from that that's not currently included in our FEFP.
Okay, so that's a net?
Yes.
For the labor for the drivers?
And in talking with operations, there are a couple of different ways that we can work out funding if the regional choice busing is a priority. We could delay the next purchase of regular buses to be able to cover it, or we can look at other options, such as leasing, that provide a variety, but that would be something we'd be looking at as part of the capital allocation process.
Okay, thank you.
Additional board comments or questions, Mr. Susan?
Does that include the new district boundary plans that are going to reduce our, probably our busing footprint across the district?
I believe the plan did include or consider that going forward. It's regional busing, so it wouldn't be housed in the school.
The next thing I did was, we made a motion at the last one to include a group of them, include a group of items for the budget, that we would say that these are all small-ticket items that could be basically covered for less than $500,000. Do you guys remember that? So there was...
I remember discussion on the issue, but I do not recall a motion.
Correct.
Okay, so the idea that campus monitors, after what we just went through with the security, where there are schools that are like O'Gallie, which is crazy, is now all the way at the bottom of the budget priorities threw me off, along with gifted programs and all the other ones that I thought were high priorities. I didn't know where we went from having these as priorities to now being at the bottom. Somebody?
The, what you're looking at, Mr. Susan and the rest of the members of the board, within each category, critical, very high, and high are where, when we analyze the board's input, the five of you, that's where those items fell into those three categories. The ranking that took place within each category was a low to high in terms of cost, right? But that was, we did that, Ms. Zirker and I did that, as a potential decision-making tool, looking at within categories, identifying low-cost items as a priority within the priority. If that's not the direction of the board, then we can certainly go in another ranking within each category direction. That's, call it a proposal at this point.
So when we spoke about it before, is there board direction to include campus monitors, expanded gifted program, Avid, suicide prevention, alternative centers, and Southlake's reoccurring dollars into one group for a half of a million dollars covers all of those moving forward? Is that something that you guys would like to move forward on as far as budget priorities, or do you guys feel that this is a solid list?
It's, I guess I'm just confused today altogether, but we've discussed it before, that it, there's order of priorities, and then there's something's only $12,000 and something's $5 million. All of a sudden, it takes a different priority if you only have a middle amount of money. So all this is still, it's nice, but decisions are going to have to be made with other information inputs.
And that was one reason why we did put it in the low to high order, is so if we could only fund, say, we funded a higher item out of one, but there was still $358,000 left, then we can go into the next and try and see what we can fund with it. We could fund everything, I know we would. There's nothing on here that I don't think the district doesn't consider important and would love to be able to fund it all, but by the ranking, it helps us identify at least where money is, make it easier to find what we can fund with the dollars that are available. We could certainly lump a bunch together, $500,750, I don't know when the number would come out, but that takes that $5.5 million number and reduces it to five. It is an option.
Can you guys give your opinion based upon that proposal?
So, Dr. Blackburn and Ms. Zirker, just so I understand the process of moving forward. So right now, we have this information in front of us, but when we get to the nitty-gritty and we actually have the budget numbers and we know until they decide to come back and take money away from us with the FEFP calculations, or the FTE calculations, so when we have that budget information and it turns out that we have $5.8 million or whatever that we need to decide what to do with, we can cover our critical priorities based on that figure, and then we will collectively need to have discussion about what we do with what's remaining as far as addressing our very high priorities.
Absolutely.
So if we have $500,000 left over after our critical has been addressed, we're not necessarily going to assume that 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the very high priority is going to be addressed first. We could potentially say, no, we really feel like centralized internal accounts and school security... school security resource officers should be addressed.
Correct.
That's correct.
And that's part of what the tentative budget hearing is, is so that we can come back and make adjustments. And I would also like to be able to come back at the July 11th board meeting and give you a presentation on where we're at and what we're at, and that gives you the opportunity to see what we've, what final numbers have come out and what we're looking at. So we could schedule another workshop, or within the meetings we have scheduled between now and then, throw in some discussion, and then the hearing would certainly be a place to have any discussion on those additional priorities that we want to fund.
Mr. Craig?
I agree with that. I think that is exactly, you know, the way we should approach it. We could sit here and go, oh, yeah, we definitely need to have that. I mean, there's some obvious things that are going to be, that we're going to fund. But to do it haphazardly and just pick a couple now and then figure out what maybe we have extra money for later, I don't think is probably the best business process to go through. I think overall, what you've done is brought a level of transparency to numbers that we haven't seen before, so I appreciate that. We're able to, the public can see exactly where the numbers fall and what we have and what it is we will consider along the way. But to go back to our last budget meeting, to what if it, we could what-if it to death, right? And never get anywhere, can chase our tail all afternoon, and it really doesn't mean anything until we actually have the physical numbers in front of us that we can actually make those decisions for. So I think we're right on track with what, I mean, what you just suggested is exactly right. I'd love to see a presentation on July 11th, because I think that that would be, we don't need another workshop. We could do it right in the board meeting, and I think that that is the appropriate time to give us whatever that is, then eight days or whatever between then and the next budget hearing to be able to formulate those things.
And that's what we're going to turn that at that day. It makes really perfect sense.
In dealing with your centralized internal accounts item that you have, there's an issue that deals with a armored car.
Yes, sir.
Is the $67,000 the capital funds that you're using for that? Where is that inside this line item?
Other funds, we would be reaching out to like food service, Brevard After-School Care, the other self-insured, self-contained funding sources that have deposits that need to be picked up, because we're going to pick all deposits up, not just schools, internal accounts. So we've already had conversations with food service, we probably have a big chunk of it about funding that.
Just to clarify on that, because $35,000 just doesn't seem capable of accomplishing that goal. So is, what I'm, the underlying is that part of that plan is going to be subsidized by those revenue generating entities?
The proposal is that the operating fund will subsidize by roughly $35,000, a third of the estimated cost, and the rest would come from the other funds.
The other funds, as in from food services, after-school?
Food services, after-school.
So the real cost is closer to, over 100?
For armored cars, I'm estimating about $100,000, and that is on valid experience of having worked with armored cars and service they provide. We can't narrow that down until after we finish the invitation to bid, which has already gone out to get numbers, and then look at schools. Not all schools will need pickup every day. Elementary schools may get it twice a week or once a week. High schools may get it every day because they do that. So until we figure all that out, we can't get specific. It's a good, from a risk management standpoint, armored car is a good security blanket for us. Right now, we have staff who take deposits to the bank. Those deposits may be $100, those deposits may be tens of thousands of dollars. We have had staff robbed.
Can you point out the time that that would actually occur? Because I pulled all of the.
I was never aware of that.
There's never, according to Officer Moros, going back, I don't know how many years, there's never been a staff member that's been robbed going to the bank.
I cannot give you specifics in my research and conversations with individuals. I was told that we had been robbed. If we haven't, we have it, but I'm going to say, I personally don't want to have to stand in front of the press and explain why someone got hurt because they got robbed at $500. And it's my recommendation of a fiduciary duty to you.
I can't, my argument here would be that I can't argue to the public that we're going to pay $100,000 for something that never ever had a reason to happen because there's never been a situation. The other thing is, is that I, logistically, we have literally, you would have to pick up at every high school and a lot of these places every day. To say that $100,000 for this is possible, there's four trucks that run every day to hit every school. I don't know what the RFP is. I requested it, the request for proposal, to see what it looks like. On top of that, there's major security concern in the fact that once you start driving an armored car to a school, that people start to think that there's money there, and then the schools start to get hit. And that, to me, creates a, so there's no need for this thing to begin with, with nobody being hurt. There's a definite future problem that we may run into where, that has been backed by security, that they may get robbed. And on top of that, we're talking about creating something that was, it doesn't solve any of our issues.
Well, the other issue that comes with this, and I'd be happy, we've got your request for the invitation to bid. I've been busy trying to get this stuff, so I apologize between the audit committee and this. I sent it to you this week. I'm experienced with it. There are several districts. All of the large districts, medium to large districts, are currently using an armored car service. There is more than the risk to our employees, which in my heart, whether it's happened today or not, is important. From a financial, it ensures deposits are done timely. It ensures that we can verify on a more timely basis that the deposits have been made. One of the big problems we get with an internal audit finding is that a week, two weeks go by before deposits are made, and we can't really track it. So to be able to track deposits, it certainly makes it a lot better situation. But I'd be happy to gather some data from other districts for you to give you their experience.
What I'm mostly, and I'm sorry to be bantering right now, but what I'm mostly concerned about is, is there a need? I don't see that. Two, how do we deploy what you're trying to do? Every high school has to deposit at least once a day, and they do that already. And in any large deposits, they have their SROs, also at middle schools, escort them to the actual bank, which would be the same as an armored car. There's just, it just, it just seems like this is, and then the memo went out where you guys were, you already stated that this may be happening to the principals, which is forward-leading. So I just, I have a severe, I am going to ask some tough questions on this issue.
Can I jump in? If you could, obviously, we know, we're not approving this right now, so if you could bring us back some information. I'm sure there's an offset of return on investment of saved labor hours. There's got to be a cost of labor for the, for those people. I agree, there's, I don't think there's a burning building here, but it is a nice safety thing. Also, I believe we have logistical issues with procedures that dictate that there are timely deposits made, and how is that going to be adjusted to make sure that our bookkeepers can comply with, with the timeliness and the schedule, and that there's no excess accumulation of funds at a school, creating desire to go to the schools because we want that money. So if you can bring us all of that back before we approve that, I have, I don't really have an opinion one way or the other, but I think there's more information needed. I agree that there are concerns, and they're probably all justified, but let's address that when the time comes.
So to clarify so that I do it the right way, I would like to know what instances there has been where a bookkeeper has been robbed in our district over the last 30 years? Also, just like he said, how much saved labor hours would this be? See a logistical plan for how this is going to go into place. And that would start, the other piece is where you're going to argue that Polk County or somebody else has it, it's just, to me, it's a square county. It's not, it's not the same logistically as a 72-mile county that's long. And then the last piece of piece about it, when we're moving this to centralized internal accounts, did we, do we have to RFP the fact that we're going with one bank? We're already moving towards doing it with Wells Fargo. Do we put that out for Chase, for all of them, to see what provide services they have? I mean, because there's other banks in the area that we might be able to provide. They might even say that they might pick it up for us if we put it out to RFP. I know that that's been an argument, but do we have to do that?
Well, centralized internal accounts is more than just strictly the bank accounts, sir.
Right.
Centralized internal accounts is the whole accounting process for schools, internal accounts, and the oversight to be able to see that deposits are being deposited correctly, and that if the deposit was two cheques, you know, $50 in checks and $100 in cash, that's what made it to the bank. It's also to ensure that checks are authorized properly and not being written incorrectly for unauthorized expenditures. Along with that, was recommended from both the Southwest Middle and the O'Gally High School reports, was to bring all the bank accounts under the district so that the district can review them. We're currently under contract with Wells Fargo. I anticipate in another year, we'll be going out for an RFP for banking services, and that would include those accounts at that point.
Dr. Blackburn, I believe you wanted to weigh in?
If I could offer a reminder and request, superintendent request. One reminder, as the board already knows, staff and the board and multiple layers of the organization have worked in concert to get us to where we are now with providing recommendations to the board to deliberate, provide direction to staff, yes or no? The type of granular details you're asking for, we could probably do for all the items that are on this list in the interest of staff time, which we're a little short of right now. If there's no appetite from the board on a particular item, superintendent is requesting to just be told there's no appetite, so we don't effectively waste time gathering information just to be told we don't want to do it. I mean, it's there. If we don't want to do it, we can put an X through it and move on to other items. We're definitely, we're not going to be able to do everything. So we already know there, there are things we won't be able to do. Board having a philosophical discussion and giving direction, putting a line through an item, I think gets us to where we need to go even quicker.
Additional board discussion? Ms. Duskevich, did you have, no? Mr. Tigler?
Good.
Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Zirker in general? All right. Dr. Blackburn, any additional conversation prior to me closing this out?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
No, I don't, we don't have, we have no public comment for the budget hearing, correct?
This is just a workshop.
Oh, it's a workshop, okay.
On July 27th.
So there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.
Workshop.